Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, January the 7th, 2025. Wow, it's 2025. It's amazing. This is our first meeting of the new year. Welcome to the new year. We're glad to have you with us tonight. Thank you all for being here. In a few minutes, we'll have a moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Before we do that, I would like to say a couple of quick thank yous to some people and a couple announcements. First of all, I want to thank all of our city staff for a wonderful Christmas season. I'll tell you what, it was, we've had more people that have complimented our lights and our decorations and our lighted sign at some crossroads and all over. So, thank you all for all the hard work and everything that you did. Thank you, John Hogan and your staff and our maintenance crew that did so much work in putting all this up. And we certainly appreciate everything that was done with that. So, great, great season. We look forward to another one coming up next year and we'll keep adding to that, we hope, as things move forward with that. A quick, a couple of congratulations. I want to say congrats to David Coffey. David is a grandfather with a new baby boy, Dawson Ray Coffey. His son and daughter-in-law had a new baby. So, when you see David, please tell him congratulations for his first, I guess that's his first grandchild. So, we're excited about that. And also, please congratulate Representative Destin Hall. Destin will, of course, be inducted and sworn in as the Speaker of the House tomorrow in Raleigh. And so, we're very excited about that and glad that he represents us here in Caldwell County. And we're excited about that and working with Destin. He's been great to work with. We really appreciate that. And also, congrats to our Water Department for their water award. Kevin is here and Jeff is here and with the drinking water award, anything you guys want to say real quick about the award? This was for 2023. Kevin?
Thank you all for the support and the investment in the water. It pays off in awards like this. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very welcome. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you guys do.
My part, thank you for Kevin's leadership. He did a great job down here.
Really, we appreciate that. And now, a couple of things as we go to this time of a moment of silence prayer. I would like to keep in mind Mayor Karen Alexander. Karen, who was the mayor of Salisbury. Karen passed away last week. Karen was a good friend and I've worked with her a number of times and I know all the council knew her very well. Wonderful lady. Been on the council and mayor in Salisbury for a number of years. And she will be missed. She was a league president and served our, not only Salisbury, but the state of North Carolina in many great ways. So, please keep her and her family in your thoughts and prayers. And of course, please remember our 39th President of the United States, President Carter, passed away at 100. And certainly, we want to think about that him and all the things that he did for this great country of ours as our president. And one other one, historian Bill Tate. Bill was quite a historian for this community. If you read his history that kept up with how this community grew, his father was mayor here in Lenore for 24 years, from 1937 to 1961. And Bill grew up in it and has always loved this community and loved Lenore. But Bill will be sorely missed. So, please keep those families in your thoughts and prayers. Now, please join us for our moment of silence and our pledge.
Please salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As we get started tonight, we do have several items scheduled for public hearings this evening. So, we'll start out with those right now. Our first one is a contiguous annexation petition. This is for 1829 Blowing Rock Boulevard. We'll hold this to consider the contiguous annexation petition submitted by Austin Northern applicant and by ordinance for property located at 1829 Blowing Rock Boulevard on US 321, North Carolina PIN number 2840657903. This is a 4.07 acre parcel. It's located within the city of Lenore's extraterritorial jurisdiction, zoned as rural residential, and is contiguous with the Lenore city limits. The staff is recommending adoption of the ordinance to extend as submitted. The owner has also applied for rezoning to B2, which we'll be doing in a few minutes. Staff has reviewed and supports the contiguous annexation petition. I will open the public hearing and I will hear from our Planning Director, Hannah Williams.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. Yes, the first topic tonight is this annexation for 1821 Blowing Rock Boulevard. The Northerns have applied or have filed a petition for voluntary annexation of the property. There's a map on page nine of your agenda packets. It shows the survey of everything that would be annexed into the city. Council certified the petition as sufficient on December 3rd of 2024 and called for a public hearing for tonight, January 7th. Currently, this property is in the ETJ. So, it's been in the zoning jurisdiction of Lenore. It's Zoned RR. And it has a 321 frontage and driveway access from the highway. And it butts the city limits to the south. And that concludes my comments, but I'm available for questions. The owner and applicant is also in the audience tonight.
Thank you, Hannah. Any questions of Hannah concerning this annexation petition? All right, I'll have the public hearing open. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. If you will come, please come forward and give us your name and address, please. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to City Council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mr. Mayor, this seems to be in accordance with our comprehensive plans, goals, and planning purposes. So, I make a motion that we approve.
Okay. A motion from Councilmember Purdue that we accept the contiguous annexation petition as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. That is unanimous. We are missing one council member tonight. Okay, we'll move on then to item B. This is a rezoning also for 1829 Blowing Rock Boulevard. Its hearing will be held to consider a rezoning request submitted again by Austin Northern, the applicant, to rezone the subject property of 4.07 acres, North Carolina PIN number 2840657903, and located at 1829 Blowing Rock Boulevard from RR Rural Residential to B2 General Business to allow for a commercial development and/or flexibility for residential. Staff and Planning Board has reviewed and supports this rezoning request. Staff further comments, excuse me, recommends adoption of the proposed rezoning based on the following consistency statement. The proposed rezoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan's policy concepts to revitalize underutilized and vacant properties. The future land use map identified the subject property as a future commercial site surrounded by other properties characterized as future commercial sites in the ETJ. Annexing this property into the city limits would expand business opportunities and provide essential services to residents as the application has proposed. I will now open the public hearing. And again, I'll recognize our Planning Director, Hannah Williams.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. With the planned annexation into the Lenore city limits, the petitioners requested rezoning to general business. The owners plan to develop the property into a commercial development fitting with B2 and highway access. Planning Board reviewed this at their November meeting and recommended approval. And I submit the rezoning staff report for the public record. And as Mayor stated, read in the consistency statement that this is an area designated on our future land use map as future commercial. And with it being annexed into the city limits, it's appropriate to have general business designation. The owner doesn't have a specific plan and rezonings aren't tied to a specific plan, but he is interested in commercial development.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Hannah? All right, thank you. The public hearing is open. If there's anyone who would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Please come forward, give us your name and address. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for any question or action that they would like to take.
Also stated by our director, this falls in line with our comprehensive plan. And I make a motion that it shall be approved.
All right, we have a motion for Mayor Pro Tim Stevens to approve the rezoning as presented. If there's no other questions, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. All right, we'll move to item C. This is a special use district. This is for 2550 Hickory Boulevard. This is a quasi judicial public hearing. And this will be held to consider a special use district request for property located at 2550 Hickory Boulevard, North Carolina PIN number 2758140788 and North Carolina PIN number 2767091392 for construction of 165-foot monopole wireless communication tower and associated ground equipment on a 3,600 square foot leased portion of the subject property with the following eight conditions. Number one is approval of this special use permit is only valid for the development of the proposed communications tower as shown on the proposed plans. Future modifications to allow for the co-location of additional service providers are not allowed, provided such modifications do not increase the height of the tower or change the design of the tower to anything other than a monopole design. Item two is the applicant must maintain the minimum liability coverage required by section 910.2 in full force and effect until such time as all above-ground portions of the facility have been removed and all other conditions of the maintenance and removal agreement have been satisfied. Item three is all above-ground portions of the communication tower must be removed within 90 days of the secession of operations or the facility may be removed by the city as provided in applicant's maintenance/ removal agreement by the city. The cost of the removal will be recovered from the applicant's bond or other security. Item four, the applicant shall continue the $10,000 bond or other security until such time as the facility has been removed and all other requirements of its maintenance/ removal agreement have been satisfied. Item five is no advertising logo is permitted on the tower. Item six, the facility must remain an unmanned facility with occasional onsite checks for operational purposes by staff. Item seven, valid permits must be obtained for this project and all construction must meet the requirements of the City of Lenore Code of Ordinances, the North Carolina State Building Code, the North Carolina Fire, State Fire Code, and any other federal, state, or local regulation that applies. Item eight is if a building permit has not been issued within 24 months of the adoption of the special use permit, the approval shall be considered null and void. This is a special use permit. I will ask our city attorney if he will just remind us about the quasi judicial in that part.
So, since this is a quasi judicial hearing, it's not the sort of legislative function this body usually decides, which is sort of political question. The political question has already been decided by this board in determining that if the applicant meets these certain requirements that the council has laid out, that they're entitled to the special use permit. And if they don't meet all of them, then they're not entitled to it. This does require sworn testimony. And so, we've got, the witnesses will each need to be sworn. And basically, what they tell you has to be based on their own knowledge or their own investigation. And it has to be relevant and essentially admissible evidence for you to consider. So, there are limits on what people can say. This isn't the usual sort of thing where, you know, anything goes. And also, this body, each of you had an obligation not to have, if you've spoken to anyone about this ahead of time, you need to disclose that and make sure that it wouldn't interfere with your ability to make a decision. If you've gone out and seen the property on your own, you need to disclose that to make sure that whoever comes before this body, either in favor of or opposition to it, knows that you'll be fair and open-minded about the decision you're going to make.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anna, do you have anything you want to add to that, please?
I would be swaying first.
Anybody else that would like to address the council, please, or would go ahead and swear you now and then we'll have it taken care of.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not invent the truth sooner than you go?
Thank you.
All righty. Thank you so much, Mayor and Council. So, this is for a special use permit at 2550 Hickory Boulevard on the Stat Inc. facility site. I'd also just like to quickly correct the record that this is for a special use permit. And I believe somewhere in the agenda, it does say special use district. It's not a special use district. And we do not do those anymore. But in other places, it does say special use permit. So, that is correct. And I'd also just like to verify that future modifications to the tower for co-location is allowed as long as height is not increased. And it says that in the agenda on page one. So, this applicant is a company called TowerCom. And they are attempting to cite a tower for T-Mobile in the southern area of Lenore. And it will have three co-location cabinets for other service providers. Staff and Planning Board reviewed the submittal for compliance with the cell tower zoning code. We've looked at FCC compliance, liability insurance, the lease with the removal provision, and a removal bond, proximity to other towers, not just other communication towers, but electrical towers. We reviewed the monopole design and co-location capabilities, as well as FAA compliance. They've provided a justification statement for why no public property is adequate in the southern area of Lenore. And they've included a map of the mile-wide search ring. And there are just no public properties within the ring. And Planning Board found these submittals to be in compliance with the standards of the cell tower ordinance. So, the staff report, which I submit for the record, it contains the findings of fact that Mayor Gibbons just read out and other conditions of approval. And those are in your packets, starts on page 24. And those conclude my comments.
Thank you.
And I know the applicants would also like to speak if recognized.
Any questions of Hannah concerning this while she is here? Okay. Thank you very much. All right, I will now entertain anyone else who would like to address the council in the public hearing. If you will, when you come up, please give us your name and address so that we can include those in our record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Frank Longest. I'm a North Carolina licensed attorney. I practice law in Burlington, North Carolina with the law firm of Holt, Longest, Wall &amp; Blades. We serve as North Carolina counsel to the applicant. I'm here tonight because this is a quasi judicial public hearing. And my main purpose is the pleasure to introduce you to Jonathan Yates, my friend of many years. And those of us who work in the cellphone, cell tower industry know Jonathan very well. He has actually done hundreds of applications in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and sometimes I think he gets to Florida. So, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Jonathan Yates, an attorney from Charleston, South Carolina. And he has been the person who has authored this application. And again, we point out that it was reviewed and approved and recommended by the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I hope I can live up to that intro. First and foremost, I have to thank this lady right here. While I work in a lot of places and not worked in Lenore in a long time, Hannah made it very easy for me. I will admit, a lot of stupid questions coming from me. And she was very kind. And you have a professional there and you have someone who does Lenore proud. Also, with greetings from Charleston, I just want to reach out to you guys on what happened here in the fall. Usually, you're watching us and sending support to us. You guys went through a heck of a time and we've been all thinking about you.
Thank you.
Tonight, this facility, and I also have to thank Robin Clement with TowerCom. She was the driving force behind this. T-Mobile had a definite need in the area. Robin led the program to solve this need for T-Mobile, close this coverage deficit, and improve cellphone coverage in that area. And I think she solved it in a good way. You have an ordinance that allows cell towers, subject to your approval, in the B2 district. What Robin found was a piece of property that not only was exactly where T-Mobile needed to be to meet their network objectives and what they needed to accomplish with it, but it was an incredible piece of property for a cellphone tower. This is the Stat Inc. property, right next to the fairgrounds. It's owned by a gentleman named Gary Sparks. He's the president of Stat Inc. Gary acquired the property we're on and five other adjacent properties in 2012. And he has, you won't believe what he has going on there. He's got trucking, he's got distribution, he's got recycling, he's got warehouses. A long way of saying, a good place to put a cellphone tower. We met the objectives of T-Mobile, but also thanks to Robin, we found a property that I think was appropriate to house this facility. What is the facility? It's a 165-foot monopole. What is a monopole? Monopole is just like a pylon you'd see in front of a Hardee's or Walmart that wear a lot thicker steel and a little bit higher. It is designed for T-Mobile. T-Mobile has the most immediate need. However, the facility has also been designed for three additional broadband carriers. If the other broadband carriers in this market want to also augment or improve coverage in that area, we have space for them, not only on the tower, but in the 60 by 60, what we call the compound on the ground. There is space for them. Going through it, this facility was approved by the FAA. And the FAA made an important determination, not only that it would mean no hazard to air navigation, but also it's not going to require air navigation lights. They made this determination. And I was looking at the mayor's, when I met the mayor on the way in, he was wearing the jacket from Foothills Regional. Why did the FAA make that determination? We're over 6.2 nautical miles away from Foothills. We're also four and a half nautical miles away from Lower Creek. So, the FAA was able to approve us first with no hazard air navigation. And then, we don't have to put lights, air navigation lights, on the facility. Everything about this property worked perfectly for us. Gary allowed us to place it so we could make all the setbacks required in the ordinance by a good margin. And it's a good co-use for us. We have basically a B2 general business property with all kinds of heavy uses going on. We will not be a heavy use. It's going to take Robin, if this board feels inclined to approve us, and Robin, after we pull the building permits, it's going to take Robin between 60 and 90 days to build the tower. After that, and as Hannah pointed out, it's an unmanned facility. T-Mobile and the other carriers, on average, will visit maybe eight to 10 times a year. All this equipment is operated and monitored remotely, but a tech will come on every now and again just to check equipment or tinker with the equipment. The facility will not produce any noise, odor, lights, vibration, fumes, or glare. What will it do? It will provide adequate wireless voice and broadband to the surrounding area. And one of the most important features that we found with wireless is the effective and the effective and important access to 911 first responders. Whether you're calling fire, police, EMS, back in the old days to call 911, we'd have to find a phone in someone's house or someone's business. Now, if someone's in trouble, you pull this phone off your hip. You get through to the 911 dispatch. They know where you are. They can keep in constant communication to you during the emergency. Hickory Boulevard's got a lot of traffic on it right next to us. It's important that that access to 911 be there. People joke about me. They say it takes me six minutes just to say my name. I'm a Southerner, so I don't apologize for it. But I'm really here for any and all questions. But again, thanks to Hannah. I hope with your review, you will find, as the Planning Commission did, we have met all the requirements. And again, thanks to Robin and Gary Sparks for offering his property. I think to solve this problem for T-Mobile, we found the perfect property in the city of Lenore to do it. We're here for any and all questions, and I thank y'all.
Good evening, all. My name is Robin Clement, and I am with TowerCom. I'm also Southern, but I won't take six minutes like Jonathan does. I'm really here just to answer any type of questions. As Jonathan mentioned, I have been a part of this process for the full fruition of the project. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to answer those as well.
Thank you. Would you give your address?
Yes. 5611 North Carolina Highway 55 in Durham, North Carolina.
Thank you.
27713.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council from the audience? We're still in the public hearing. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, turn it over to the council for any question or action, please.
I just have one quick question.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you for letting us know about the FAA approval. But if we have a medical chopper come through that part of the city to get to the hospital or to do a landing in a remote location, will they be able to see, will there be enough light to see the tower?
During the daylight hours, yeah, but obviously night. And also, keep in mind, we're at 165. The FAA, the standard requirement in the country is 200 feet and above, require air nav lighting unless you're in close proximity to a runway. So, once the tower goes up, it is registered with the FAA. And all that is published in what they call nodums or noticed airman.
Okay, so they'll know it's there.
They'll know it's there. They will not see it after dark. I want to be very frank. And that's always the trade-off because when you have surrounding residents, they don't like the lights on towers. So, you'll see, your ordinance is very specific here. A lot of ordinances limit you to 199. There's a reason for that. They don't want to have the air nav lights. Your ordinance even takes a little lower. The maximum height allowed under Lenorens is 165.
Okay.
So, to be quite frank, no at night, they wouldn't. But as soon as the tower goes up, I'm sure the chopper pilots will put it into their, I assume they'll put it into their logbooks and know to avoid it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have just one quick question of Hannah. I think it may be, I don't know, you're welcome to stand there. I don't want to, it's number five on the advertising logo permitted. Is there any, it says advertising logo, but is there any signage that's going to be allowed on the pole itself or in any surrounding fencing or something?
I actually have a signage page. And it's mainly signage. It's what we're required to do. And it's a mercy signage. So, we will have, I'll walk this way. It'd be very required caution notices.
Sure. But nothing billboard size or anything like that. It's just for anyone that needs to be there to see the signs. But for the general public, it's not going to be.
No, these are really just sort of occupational for the workers. As much as T-Mobile loves to paint it pink.
Oh, I'm sure. And that's where I was going.
Put a big thing on the front. No.
Right.
The signage will be limited as we're shown here, which will be a no trespassing sign. We have to have an informational sign and then two caution.
Sure. Thank you. That answers my question. Thank you. Any other questions, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As a procedural matter, we would request that the application and all of the documents that are part of that application, including the drawings that have been submitted, be part of the record.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I'm sure Hannah, you've got that taken care of, okay?
TJ says that's fine.
Yeah, I think Hannah had actually asked you to consider her, the packet. And I think most of them are in there. But yeah, it's fine. Take the whole thing.
Thank you. All right, no other questions. I will close the public hearing, turn it over to council for any discussion and/or motion. motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the item be approved as submitted and with the guidance from our staff, and make a motion it be approved.
Okay. I have a motion from Councilmember Purdue that the special use permit for 2550 Hickory Boulevard be approved?
If I may suggest, as a friendly amendment, that you adopt the staff's proposed findings along with the staff's proposed standards as a condition of the permit.
And I would make such an amendment to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. You heard the motion and the amendment to it from our city attorney and Councilmember Purdue. If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you for being with us. All right. We'll move to item D. This is a zoning ordinance amendment. This hearing will be held to consider a proposed zoning ordinance amendment permitting cultural and community facilities, churches, synagogues, and mosques by right in industrial districts, and offers the following consistency statement. The proposed zoning ordinance amendment is consistent with the Lenore competency plan because it results in sensible and straightforward zoning standards. This text amendment aligns the land use impacts of permitted uses with the appropriate zoning district. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it aligns local zoning ordinance with federal law. Staff and the planning board have reviewed and supports the zoning ordinance amendment. I will open the public hearing, and I will bring our planning director, Hannah, back up.
All right. Yes, thank you so much. This is a city-initiated zoning amendment to allow for this religious assembly in industrial districts. It's a quick fix that will keep our local ordinance in compliance with federal law, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of 2000. The act, it just has many parts, but the part we're concerned with tonight is regarding treating religious and secular land uses with similar land use impacts equally. And basically, that means if you allow a restaurant in a zoning district, you also have to allow a church-sponsored soup kitchen. If you allow a movie theater in a district, you also would need to allow a church or religious assembly in that district as well. And this has come up where a church in industrial district was seeking to rebuild one of their buildings, and I realized that the churches/synagogues/mosques/religious assembly, they just weren't allowed in industrial. A church can continue to exist when it's not, like, not a permitted use in that zone. If it already exists, it can continue to exist, but it can't improve unless it is allowed in that zoning district and on the permitted use chart.
And out towards, oh gosh, West Lenore? That building that would change to a...
That's a good question. That's not what I'm discussing tonight, though. Yeah, I'm looking at Blair's Fork Baptist Church, actually. That is owned industrial, and they were interested in changing some of their buildings around. And there aren't that many churches that are in industrial districts today that we could tell by ownership. Sometimes churches rent, and they're a little bit harder to keep track of. But I don't think that this will affect too many properties. And the problem came up because indoor recreation and movie theaters are allowed in industrial districts. So I just want to make this quick little amendment to just allow churches by right in industrial. And planning board reviewed and recommends approval of this. And you can review the ordinance. It's on page 50 of the packet, and it's just a very small change to the permitted use chart.
Okay. You good?
And that, yeah, that concludes my comments.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Hannah concerning this zoning ordinance amendment as presented? Okay. Public hearing is open. I will now open, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the council concerning this zoning ordinance amendment, please come forward, give us your name and address. All right. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it over to council for any discussion and/or action.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve this ordinance amendment as presented.
Thank you. Councilmember Beal makes a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment as presented from staff and board, planning board, to us. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Here's Hannah. All right. We'll move to item E. This is a zoning ordinance amendment as well. This is for Beach Bingo. This hearing will be held to consider a proposed zoning ordinance amendment regarding Beach Bingo. Beach Bingo is defined in North Carolina General Statute 14-309.6 as bingo games which have prizes of $10 or less, or merchandise that is not redeemable for cash and that has a value of $10 or less. The planning board has reviewed and supports the zoning ordinance amendment. As background information, in appeals case AP-1-24, the Board of Adjustment determined that due to the $10 cash reward, Beach Bingo falls under adult gaming establishment as a land use and is required to meet the performance standards in Section 611 of the Lenore zoning ordinance. The performance standards include separation distances from residential districts, churches, parks, schools, addiction treatment facilities, and other sensitive uses. See enclosed copy of Section 611, as well as definitions of gaming in the Lenore zoning ordinance. The applicants, Amanda Moser and Rochelle Dula, have proposed to exclude Beach Bingo from adult gaming establishment and to allow it wherever indoor recreation is allowed. I will open the public hearing, and I will turn it over to our planning director, Hannah Williams, again.
All righty. Thank you so much, Mayor and council. Right, our applicants propose to exclude Beach Bingo from adult gaming and to allow wherever indoor recreation is allowed. Indoor recreation is allowed in B2, B3, I'll say what they are. B2 is general business. B3 is our downtown zoning district. B7 is highway business, and it's, we do not have many B7 properties at this time in our industrial districts, light industrial I1 and heavy industrial I2. Planning board recommends approval of this zoning amendment, and just like Mayor Gibbons said, the appeals case determined that the $10 cash reward means that it fell under the adult gaming ordinance, that Beach Bingo fell under the adult gaming ordinance as a land use and would be required to meet the performance standards. And Beach Bingo is defined in statutes as games, bingo games that have prizes of $10 or less. And the statutes also have statewide regulations on how Beach Bingo games can be operated and the accounting for the money made. These applicants have obtained a state license to operate Beach Bingo in Lenore at 312 Morganton So, a copy of the adult gaming ordinance and relevant definitions, they're in your packets on page 54. And as written, the adult gaming establishment applies to any gaming establishment that rewards with cash. The adult gaming ordinance, it was adopted by council in 2017, and it was primarily intended to regulate internet sweepstakes and video gaming machines. And this type of gaming, it can attract unwanted behaviors and have several adverse impacts on other properties, talking about the internet sweepstakes. But in researching the impacts of the proposed text amendment, planning board reviewed police calls for service at locations where bingo games are held, including the Moose Lodge and American Legion. Those locations have had less than five calls for service in five years. Not many at all. We've also reviewed police calls for service at locations where there are video sweepstakes machines at, like, gas stations, and those calls for service are much higher over a five-year period. And you can expect a retail location like a gas station would have more calls for service period. But these locations just seem to be quite above the norm. We're talking somewhere in the 900 to 1,300 calls for service in those five years. We were even able to track calls for service at a known Beach Bingo location that operated between 2010 and 2014, at the intersection of Taylorsville Road and Wilkesboro Boulevard. And this, they operated before the adult gaming ordinance was passed. And most of those were vehicular calls for service. There were 36 calls total, and 27 of them seemed to be vehicle-related, just being close to a busy intersection like that. It's an easy place to pull over if you're having vehicle problems. So that leaves about nine calls for service between 2010 and 2014. So, planning board's review concluded that while adult gaming, excuse me, I'm going to start that sentence over. The planning board's review concluded that while the adult gaming establishment ordinance is effective in regulating internet sweepstakes gaming, lighter land use controls for bingo gaming seems appropriate. So, staff and planning board support the proposed amendment.
And in discussing things with Hannah and also the city manager, it occurred to me, depending on what the will of the council is, you might want to make the language for the definition of Beach Bingo a little more flexible. It actually reminded me of the comment that the gentleman made about how our cell tower limit is 165 and the FAA limit is 199. It's possible, I don't know the history of our ordinance on that, but it's possible that we pass 165, when limit 165, and they bumped it up to 199. So, something, if you see fit to pass this, you might want to give yourself an additional flexibility. I would propose, she mentioned, Hannah mentioned the statute that defines Beach Bingo as limiting it to $10. I might suggest that instead of the language that's currently in Section 1 of the proposed ordinance amendment, you could say that Beach Bingo is defined as bingo games which have prizes of a value no greater than the amount allowed under NCGS 14-309.66, which is what's defined Beach Bingo as $10. So if the legislature bumps it up to 25, Lenore's right in line without having to change it again. And then it said, or any similar successor statute section. So if they move it around, our ordinance would follow along with that. So, again, if you see fit to approve this and you want to have a little more flexibility in the future, I would suggest that language. And I've got it written down, so if you want to just adopt it as I propose, I can give it to Shirley so she can put it in, or however you want to do it. But of course, you're welcome to approve it or reject it as proposed, or not change it, however you want to do. But I just thought you might want to consider that language.
The drafted ordinance is on page 55 of your packets, if you haven't, I don't want to find it yet. It's a really long packet this time.
All right.
Question, Hannah.
Yes, sir.
Do you say that the video sweepstake gaming is not permitted in the Beach Bingo facilities, or they just choose not to have that?
Yeah. It would not be allowed. The video sweepstakes gaming would not be allowed in a Beach Bingo facility.
Is that just a state law, just what they choose, or the ordinance choose not to accept that?
Well, that's a good question.
There's a lot of litigation about sweepstakes. A case came out a couple of weeks ago, I think, from the Court of Appeals of the North Carolina Supreme Court, about whether an operation was following state law in terms of making it game of chance or game of skill. It's a constant battle in terms of trying to deal with that issue.
And I'll also state that state law does say that no other kind of bingo gaming can happen at a Beach Bingo facility. Only Beach Bingo can happen at a Beach Bingo facility. So that's all that their license is for. So if normal bingo's not even allowed at Beach Bingo, then I can't imagine that other kinds of gaming can happen there. So if you have a Beach Bingo license, you can only operate a Beach Bingo game. So, that's why I would think that, yeah.
That's good. All right. Any other questions of Hannah? Thank you. We're still in the public hearing, of course. Is anyone from the audience who would like to address the council concerning this zoning ordinance amendment for Beach Bingo? Now's the time to do so. Please come forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Rochelle Dula, 1484 Collie Springs Road, Lenore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Hope everyone is doing great tonight. I just want to say, on behalf of M&amp;R Beach Bingo, we're not gaming, stand-up gaming. We're just strictly bingo. No drugs, no smoking within the facility or any of that. We just enjoy each other, talking, laughing, playing bingo, and it gives us something to do. Even as me, my husband passed six years ago, he was on my ring, and I don't party, don't drink, none of that. It gives me something to do. It gives me seeing different people come out, putting a smile on my face. And that's just it, about bingo. It's just a normal game, playing bingo. It's nothing drug-wise or any of that. And we have a nice place for them to come, and it's just mostly older people that don't have anything to do, because they don't want to get out here and party and all that. So we just go to bingo, laugh, and talk, and have a good time. And I just ask y'all just to let us open up. We won't give y'all any problems.
Okay.
Thank y'all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Beal.
My name is Tanya Dula, 417 Clearview Circle, Northeast Lenore. I just want to say, I have had the opportunity to go down to M&amp;R Bingo, and if I mean, I deal with children all day long. So just to have somewhere to go, just to relax, I use it as a relaxation. I mean, I might go in and stay 10 minutes, I might stay 15 minutes, might stay an hour, but it's just a place for me to go and relax. I don't consider it gambling. It's just a relaxation for me. I don't know, maybe you all might need to come and experience that relaxation, you know, if you're dealing with people just to ease your mind. So, I've just, and, let's see, last week, I did an event, and a lot of the teachers from the middle school came out and joined me. And I could not believe the response that I got. They enjoyed themselves. They said, hey, we have to do this again. I told them, they don't have to wait on me. If you want to go, you know the location. I invite you all to come out and see what it's about. Just bring you about $5, and you can come and see. You don't have to stay a long time. But it is a good establishment, and like she said, there's no drinking, and I appreciate no smoking. There's no smoking, it's smoke-free. So it is a good location, and it is a good place for people that's a little older that have nowhere to go to relax. No drinking, except for water and maybe a soda, so it's good. So, I just enjoy, invite you all to come out. It is a good location. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. I'll turn it over to council for any discussion, questions, or motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion from Councilmember Ike Perkins that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment for Beach Bingo.
You need to add with the language that...
And the amendment of the language that the attorney presented.
There we go. And we'll make sure you get, you get that straight.
I will. I'll get it to you.
And the membership.
He's coming, he's coming, we're coming.
We're not soliciting memberships here.
Come and check it out.
Well, all right. We have a motion on the floor, and no other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much, and that is approved. Thank y'all, and good luck with it.
Bingo.
Bingo.
What'd you say, R and I, man? What'd you say?
Under the B, nine. Under the B, nine.
Everybody's in line.
All right, we'll move on into consent agenda items tonight consisting of item A, your minutes of the city council meeting Tuesday, December 3rd. Item B, your closed session minutes of that same council meeting Tuesday, December 3rd. These were reviewed by city council, city manager, and city attorney. Item C is a bid award for construction contract. This is for the modified procurement and procurement and installation contract for the Mulberry Recreation Center Playground Improvements Project to VAR's Recreation. This recreation company is the lowest responsibly responsible bidder for the selected options, is appropriately licensed, perform the work, specializes in recreational equipment, sells its installation, and has a history of successful projects within the city of Lenore. Contract amount for the selected options will be $70,108.48. Item D is a master service agreement with McGill Associates. Recommendation of execution of a master service agreement with McGill PA for civil engineering services related to the campus improvements project. That's for the auditorium slash gymnasium and OVT pavilion site. Item E is for Kenwood VM 5930 mobile in-car radios. Our Lenore Police Department recommends approval of purchasing 43 of these mobile in-car radios at a promotional price of $132,620, $135,622, I'll get it right, $622 from the approved vendor, High Country Communications by utilizing funding from lapsed salaries due to staffing changes and open positions as well as utilizing federal forfeiture funds to purchase budgeted capital items. The purchase will ensure compliance with the P-25 Phase II Viper radio requirements by the recognized deadline of July 20, of July 1st, 2025. Additional background information is available on the submitted council action plan form. Item F is a purchase of canines. This will be from the Lenore Police Department, a recommendation of purchasing two single-purpose canines at a cost of $15,001, dual-purpose police canine at a cost of $9,000 from vendors, High Drive Canine and Cedar Creek Kennels. Note, federal asset forfeiture funds will be utilized for this purchase. Additional background information is available also.
And they will be insured.
They will be insured. Item G is policy addition. This is Personnel Resolution Employee Handbook and Resolution that prohibits the viewing of pornography on government networks and devices pursuant to House Bill 971/North Carolina General Statute 143-805, which requires all public agencies to adopt a policy that prohibits the viewing of pornography on government networks and devices. And the staff recommends city council approve the addition to the policy in the Personnel Resolution and Employee Handbook and approval of a resolution that prohibits the viewing of pornography on government networks and devices as recommended. Note, additional background information is included. Item H is Resolution for Joe Low. Approval of the Resolution for Corporal Joe Low in honor and recognition of seven years of dedicated and outstanding service to the Lenore Police Department, City of Lenore, and his citizens. Corporal Low has over 26 years of law enforcement service to include time with Glenn Alpin, Hickory, and Burke County. On that, item I is a resolution for surplus property. This is for declare the following police weapon and police badge of Corporal Joe Low. Upon retirement, it's surplus and no longer have any additional use for the city of Lenore. It's a Sig Sauer P-320 pistol and there's a serial number enclosed as per North Carolina General Statute Number 20-187.2 and is recommended by the police department. All right, those are your consent agenda items A through I. Open up for any discussion and/or motion when you're ready.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve items A through I as presented.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Thomas that we approve the consent agenda items A through I as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Next is requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone that would like to address the council, this is the time to do so. Glad to have everyone here. Those are our staff that are still here, but we have some guests. We're always glad to have you here with us, so thank you. Nothing coming up. We do not have any reports of our boards and commissions. We'll move on to the recommendations and report of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council tonight, a couple items for information. Our curbside Christmas tree pickup will begin, is underway and will continue through the city to the end of the month. The ABC Board will meet on Thursday, January 16th at 2:00. The Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, January 9th at 6:00, 3rd floor City Hall. The City-City Service Committee will meet on Monday, January 13th at noon at the Civic Center. The Economic Development Advisory Committee will meet on Tuesday, January 14th at 8:15 a.m. and that'll be at the Civic Center. The Parks Recreation Advisory Board will not meet in January. The next meeting of that board will be on Monday, February 17th at 6:00 at Mulberry Rec. Our loose-leaf pickup continues around town and we're trying to pick up things regarding the brush with the county and hopefully make some progress on that as the month goes on. And then I would also note, city also will be closed on Monday, January 20th in observance of Martin Luther King Holiday. Tonight, we have one item for council action. We have a minimum housing ordinance at 205 Brixton Place Southwest. Staff recommend city council adopt the order of abatement directing staff to abate the minimum housing violations by demolishing the structure at 205 Brixton Place Southwest. That's NC PIN number 2758368855 and also parcel ID 09135216 as submitted. You see the photos in your packet and the conditions of that dwelling. And so we recommend council approve abatement.
All right, you heard the recommendations from the city manager through the, from the staff concerning the abatement for the minimum housing ordinance for 205 Brixton Place Southwest. Open up for any discussion or question or and motion concerning this abatement.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the abatement as presented.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Bill that we approve the minimum housing ordinance abatement for 205 Brixton Place Southwest as presented. No other question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Here's Hannah. All right, we'll move on then to report and recommendation to our city attorney. Anything else from Mr. Rohr?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. And I have a report quickly for the biennium. Please pass those out to everybody who's down there. Okay, this is for a voting delegate for the North Carolina League of Municipalities 25, 26 Biennium Legislative Goals. We may designate, and I think they're putting me up as the designated to serve as the city of Lenore's voting delegate for the North Carolina League of Municipalities, 16 proposed legislative goals. Each municipality casts a single vote by selecting 10 of the 16 proposed legislative goals so that cities and towns have a focused state and federal advocacy agenda for 2025, 2026 legislative biennium, which begins in January at the North Carolina General Assembly. Please note that Councilmember Jonathan Beal served on the Legislative Policy Committee that helped come up with the, these legislative goals that we have before you. What we passed out there, 16 of them there, we have, city manager and I have gotten together and gone over the ones that we think would be the best for us, the 10, and they're marked in yellow on that. And if everyone is in agreement with these and approval, we will send, submit these to the North Carolina League to go to our General Assembly this week.
And I would note that one of those goals was drafted by our city attorney with Mr. Beal's assistance, getting that on the final 16. So that's regarding the issues we've had with the water system in Hudson.
It's on the, it's on the third page, reduce regulatory conflicts between state agencies that discourage voluntary consolidation, merger, and interconnections of municipal utility systems. So that's.
Nashville.
It's very, very wordy, but essentially there's conflict between different agencies.
Call me wordy?
Yes.
For both.
For both.
For both.
But there was a lot of discussion about that because that one particularly affects us with some projects going forward and other cities were able to see the conflict that it will cause them in the future as well. So that was pretty important.
So that's your goals, that's the ones that we have selected. If you're in agreement with that and you will make a motion to make me the delegate, I'll take care of that tomorrow for it.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend you buy a new color printer.
You'll have to take that up with the city hall.
But in addition to that, I'd make a recommendation that we accept these highlighted goals from the city of Lenore.
Okay, and you're making me the delegate?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That is the recommendation from Mayor Pro Tim Stevens that we, I would be the voting delegate and we would submit the goals as we have marked here for the legislative goals, the 10 of the 16 that we were, that we were asked to do. If no other discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. Any reports from any of our council members tonight? Anything you want to bring before us?
Mr. Mayor and council, I don't think I saw anything about the MLK Day celebration that will happen, starting, huh?
The day before our meeting, so yeah.
That's what I was thinking, yeah. Because we're going to meet and then we'll have time. But there will be activities at the Martin Luther King Center, celebrating the Martin Luther King Holiday. There will be a breakfast on January the 18th. There will be tickets for sale as we have every year. There will be a program that day on that Saturday morning for the breakfast. And on Monday, there will be a program at Martin Luther King. And I think there's also submission through NAACP and Martin Luther King for a march and more to come on that. So we'll get something out. But there are, there will be activities during, for the Martin Luther King Holiday and it's probably so close to our next meeting, we wouldn't have time to talk about it.
Right, thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
So that'd be Saturday the 18th and Monday the 20th.
Yes.
There's also a.
Flyer.
Yeah. There's also a gospel singing on Sunday on the 19th at 3:00.
And I know Joshua will get that out on the page, so.
You'll get all, you'll get all these out.
Thank you, Joshua.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything else that we need to bring up before the council tonight? If not, we stand adjourned.